All right. Good evening and welcome to the City of Boardman City Council meeting. I call this meeting to order. We'll stand and do the flag salute, please. Ready to begin?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, general call, please.
Yes. Councilor Pearson.
Here.
Councilor Norton. Councilor Dragan.
Here.
Councilor Williams is present.
Councilor Prophet.
Here.
Councilor Beagle.
Present.
And Mayor Cooper.
Here. So Isaac, we'll just make note that Isaac was pre-arranged.
Okay.
Approval of minutes February one, twenty twenty-two, a regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I would make the motion to approve the minutes from February one, twenty twenty-two as written.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any discussion anybody like to have on the minutes? Okay, so we'll do a roll call.
All right. Councilor Pearson.
Yes.
Councilor Beagle.
Approve.
Uh, Councilor Junior Dragan.
Yes.
Councilor Prophet.
Uh, yes, and Mayor Cooper.
Yes. All right, we'll go down to introduction. This is Peta Group.
Yes, tonight I'd like to introduce our planner that, uh, Carla McLean came in. I think maybe we introduced her the last time that we had the public hearing, but.
This is my first time I met you. Hi there.
Nice to meet you. We're happy to have her on board and tonight Ralph Craig. And, uh, and, uh.
I didn't even recognize him. He always smokes. No, here, Ralph.
Well, we're so excited to have him. He's coming on as our special, uh, special man. What's the name?
Special Projects Coordinator.
Yeah, Special Project Coordinator because we've got so much planning that's going on. But we thought, you know, by the time we start the lawn and all of these tide water development and a lot of these developments, we need somebody on the ground. And so, uh, Ralph, we were just lucky to get him because he's familiar with our area and construction and water sewer. So, you know, we're glad to have him on board. He started Monday, so he's getting his feet wet. And, uh, I'm trying, we're trying hard not to throw him in the deep end.
Try to fire.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You bet.
Glad to be here.
I think too, while I've got the floor, I, we have received a couple of nice cards for, because of Barry's passing. One of them is from, uh, Moore County Planning in Oregon. They sent us a nice card. And, uh, Architects West, which is an architect firm we have, we do business with, sent us a nice card. And, uh, Sam Navegro and his brother from the Bailey Park subdivision sent us a nice bouquet. So, um, you know, so that's been nice that people, and we, we received a lot of emails and stuff saying, so sorry, you know, to care about their loss. So that was nice.
This is better, um, I'm sorry, I think it just is a good reminder of how much of an impact Barry had in our community and our area. And, uh, I think that's just a, a good reminder to, of how, how big of an impact he had in this area for the number of years that he, because he graduated here, didn't he? Lived here.
No, he, no, he, he came when he was about twenty or twenty-three.
Oh, I thought, oh, you didn't graduate here?
But I think that, you know, when, when you, when you have to start going down, like calling SX chairman and those kind of people on the state level to let them know, you know, I mean, there was a lot of, there was a lot of phoning to do that next morning for sure, just to let people that you knew were important to him to know. So that was nice. And since you mentioned Barry, how long he's worked here, I, I, that made us pull some notes and look at our things. And so Barry started on, uh, twelve eighth. And so he worked here forty-two years. In May first of ninety-seven, so he's been here twenty-five years. And Kevin just passed, he started on January thirteenth of ninety-seven, so Kevin just passed twenty-five years. And, yeah, look at there. This is like. We're keeping it. So you guys figured this out that are coming to visit. Guy started, uh, February fourteenth of two thousand, so he just finished, uh, twenty-two years. And Jackie started two thirteen, so that's just like last Saturday, she'll be here twenty years. So, you know, this is pretty nice to have that many long-term employees. And so, yeah. I just wanted to recognize them and for being great supporters of our community.
Obviously been a good place for people to live and work, so.
I think that says a lot there because we're not that big. We're getting bigger.
Yeah.
In this building, but I think it says that people enjoy working.
Yeah, yeah. And see, I'm here fifteen and Rick's here eleven, so if we don't, we just can't get rid of us. Thank you.
You're welcome. Financial report.
You have your financial report ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. You can see there that we received the last funds on the CDBG Capital Fund, which is the Boardman migrant head start. Um, they're still trying to get all their requirements in line so that they can actually get the kiddos in the building. Um, but we are done and, um, you can see our ending fund balance, so there's a whole fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents left. So we expended all of those funds. Um, and so we're hoping soon that we'll start seeing kiddos over there. Uh, they're also working on an open house for that. Um, they've also thrown out the idea that if city council prefers to have like a, a private showing type of a thing, you know, they, uh, are still coming to do a couple of things here and there. And they could schedule a day and they'd be glad to give everybody a tour since, um, they are very, very thankful for all the support from the city because otherwise they would not have that building. Um, and nothing else out of the ordinary for the month of January. I did want to know that our interest rates have held steady, no more decreasing for the last three months. So I guess maybe knock on wood that they don't go down anymore since we're down to a point four or five percent or a one percent.
That's all you have. Any questions? Mr. Beagle.
Mr. Mayor, I, I do have a question on item five thirty, the sewer fund. It looks like there's a lot of negative and I, I go across the, the line item there over to the fund balance. It's two thousand three sixty. Is that in the negative?
It is in the negative. Fund five twenty and five thirty are our previous water bonds and sewer bonds that we refunded with our new geo bond. And so the only thing we're collecting now on these is past due taxes. Um, nothing with the current taxes. All the current taxes go to the geo bond. But all of the money from these two funds are going to roll over into the geo bond.
So next month when we have our meeting, it'll.
It might still be negative. Yeah, we're still getting payments coming in. We're going to get payments um, every month still coming in. People will still pay property taxes. Um, so that one will get smaller, um, but it's not, um, I should, we're not losing any money. We're, it's going to be a slow collection on that.
Thank you. That's all I have. Any other questions about financial report?
Well, and I think on that note that, you know, people that pay their taxes quarterly. See, we get a big amount in November, but then the people that pay quarterly will still have some coming in.
Right, the next discount, it will be April, so we'll probably see another big payment come in.
Okay, moving right on with a little pre-arranged presentation, BCBA.
Thank you. Uh, I think Rick might share some maps up on the screen. I had come to the last meeting, we talked about the purchase of some property on Front Street. And we talked about a couple of different parcels and we'd actually like to come and make an offer tonight on three lots on Front Street. The two just to the east of the.
Just a second. I'm trying to get to the share screen so everybody online can see. Yes, you see the Katie was on.
No, I did not see the Katie. So Katie is present online. Okay.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to go over to the side. Okay, so we.
Lisa.
Yes.
You're going to have to speak to the microphone where they can hear.
Okay, all right. We're looking at the two lots just east of the old Blue Mountain campus, the, the building that the city owns. And, and we are also looking at the lot. I think it's on the other map.
Right here.
Yes, lot number four and four hundred, um, which is down in the, into the next block.
I only got one map from you.
Okay, they're both on there, so we'll get.
Well, because we'll have to do a, a partitioning of the VMCC lot.
We will have to do a partitioning to make that, um, as you can see in the VMCC replat, this is one larger lot. We, we will be needing to get this one divided into two lots. So that, that's, um, our proposal anyway is to purchase all three of those for fifty thousand dollars each. And as we talked about, uh, uses will be for retail spaces. Immediately, the first project that we will do is a retail strip on the lot seat of VMCC.
That's both lots combined. You're gonna.
Both lots combined. What we're looking at is about ten thousand square feet of retail space right there.
Don't tell me it's going to be another general dollar store.
It will be smaller, um, parcels, smaller spaces in the building. So there'll be the ability to make those sizes on the interior of the building, um, to, and set the clients. Because what we'll do, we'll build the shell and then we'll build the interior walls based on, uh, the sizes that, that businesses need.
Now, are you going to put the building up itself and then reconfigure the interior based on the needs of the client?
Exactly, exactly. We will probably have two anchor. I'm assuming, I'm assuming Tori will have the building filled up before it's completed. But, um, i- initially we will definitely have the two anchor tenants there. And then the interior spots will be, um, fluid based on, uh, who, who needs space.
So I think that's the part for, uh, our real estate at the end or executive session?
It, it wasn't necessarily. It can be and you, we can talk about it and then even, and if you want to make a decision, we can come out of the executive session and, or you can just say that, uh, you'll take it under advisement and we'll let them know if we, you know.
Or we do it now? Is that the three options that we have? Well, I, I, maybe I think it's best that we go into the executive session is what I'm thinking.
Okay, that sounds good to me, too.
That's what I was.
That's great. Just let us know.
All right, we shall do that. So we'll go into executive session and we'll discuss it. And then whatever we decide, we will come out and say.
Okay, sounds great. Any more, Tori? Matt, do you guys have any questions for me?
So if I'm thinking, so the BMCC replat is going to be divided into two plot, two lots and you're gonna, and you, and you wanted both of those, is that correct?
It will be, it will be this lot.
Okay, and then the, then this, okay, that's what it.
So are you taking, are you taking the, the lot east of the one you pointed to, forty?
Forty-nine, forty-nine hundred.
Yeah, the five thousand, you're not taking that lot?
No.
Okay.
Okay, now.
Okay, so it's just, just half of BMCC and forty-four.
Yes.
Okay.
So the city just needs to figure out the, 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 the new line.
Yes.
To be able to, for logistic purposes on your lot. Okay.
And we have a new planner on board.
Yeah, I have all kinds of planning questions, but they're very specific and we will get to those after the city makes a decision, so. It won't be tonight. Well, I don't know, maybe. I don't believe my answers tonight, so.
Katie and, uh, Leslie, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
All right, we don't have any other questions. Do you have anything else you would like to share as far as your presentation?
No, that's it.
Well, thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you for taking time on your day.
All right, we'll go, that takes us to public comment. Uh, David Sykes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's take two minutes. I know you've got busy schedules. Introduce myself. I'm David Sykes. I'm running for county commissioner. I'm just going to give you a little bit of history so you know who I am. I grew up on Phyllis over in Reed's Fort. My family, I've been in the newspaper business, uh, almost my whole life. My family owns the, I'm a courier over there. And so, um, I graduated from Reed's Ford High School, went in the Navy for four years, came back out, started at the University of Oregon in journalism. There was a lot of beavers around this country, so. It is what it is, you know. So, anyway, uh, my mother died of a heart attack, sudden heart attack. So, uh, my wife, I met my wife, April at UVO, so we went over and ran a family paper for a while. And then, uh, we, that didn't work out, so we came, we wanted our own paper, so we bought the, that was in nineteen eighty. We were twenty-nine years old. And, um, so I've been in Moore County for forty-two years. And, uh, actually, we started a paper here in Boardman in nineteen eighty-three. And we operated it for five years. Some of the people who were here, Denny was over at the gas station. Art was at the grocery store, the Tatton family, Hattie, Dot City and, uh, you know, Bruce Nichols, uh, Bruce, uh, and, uh, Don Craig were over at Mountain Valley. So that was, uh, after that, we, I started a business in Pendleton, wanted the place to kiss my two sons. I have four children, raised them all here. If the two sons wanted to be in business with me, I wanted more, I had to have more, more business. So I started a business in Pendleton called Rapid Print in nineteen eighty-eight. It's still in business. It's now called Sykes Brothers Printing. The two of them are running it. Um, my son Chris is going to move over here when, uh, within the year, he can buy a house in Heather. He'll find, we'll find one. That's, that's my plan. And, uh, if I'm fortunate enough to get elected, I'm, he's going to take over the business, so I'm gonna do what I do. And, uh, some of my background, mostly business, but I have had some experience. I was on the Moore County Planning Commission Chairman for ten years, worked with Garland. And, uh, I don't know what she's gonna say after these. Uh, as President of Willbrook Economic Development Group, um, as a founding member, I've been president, like, four times treasurer, four years. Uh, I've been on the, uh, remember the Alps Club, Odd Fellows, um, all those things. So just, just real brief so you can, you know, get on your business. Why am I running? That's what people say, you know. The reason I'm running is that, you know, I see a lot of really smart, I've met a lot of really smart and talented people in Moore County. They're in our government, they're in our businesses, they're, they're volunteers like, like you are. And I want, I, if we can work together, I think we can accomplish a lot in this county. I think we're going to get a good place to raise kids, have our families, and for us to live here, too. We're not always going to get along. We're different all over. Everybody knows that. But, uh, our differences need to be settled, I, uh, you know, or at least work through, you know, I think in a civil, you know, orderly way and work through our, our issues. And, and I think that can be done. Uh, I'm really, I'm really happy with Moore County's, uh, uh, economy. We have three major things now. It's diversified. We have our wind and our solar, you know, our renewables. We have our industry here that, that's out here at the border. And we have our agriculture. And then we got a little tourism going, too. So it's really nice to see it diversified. I mean, I was in Heather when the mill went out. One day there was a hundred and thirty-eight jobs and one day they were gone. I was here about a year, I think they started the coal plant. You, you people all lived through, you know, the coal plant shutting down and, and I can remember saying at the time, we'd go to county court meetings and they'd say, well, when the coal plant shuts down, we're all.
Padded.
Because they paid all these taxes. Well, look what happened. We got diversified. It's a good thing. And so, and I think these, all these businesses, all these different economic entities can work together. And like I said, this could be friction, but I think it's a good thing. It keeps us stable. So that's, uh, that's why, you know, that's why I want to run, so. That's kind of who I am, why, why I'm doing this, so. I don't know if it's kosher to ask people, but, you know, if you see, see Fed to support me, I really appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Thank you.
So, um, just one more. I'm, uh, today's paper, the paper out, so I hit the office at six A M.
Absolutely. Thanks. Thanks for sharing.
All right.
Other public, uh, comment. Renee, do you have anything you want to share tonight?
Yes, I do. We have a lot going on at the chamber. All right, so we have our awards banquet is coming up on Saturday, March twelfth, uh, for our thirty-second annual distinguished citizens awards. We do have a few tickets left, but they are selling out fast. So if you guys want to go, make sure you grab those tickets. Then on the sixteenth, we'll have our first in-person luncheon for the year. Uh, that will be at noon at the Riverfront Center. And it will also, uh, be part of our general annual membership meeting. The next day, we have a couple of events going on. We have a virtual luncheon learn webinar, uh, hosted by Express Employment. And this is free for all members to attend. You just need to register on our website and grab the webinar link for that. Uh, that evening, we are holding our monthly paint night with Miss Michelle, which will be at the Sage Center. Uh, she has a painting, a nice little spring flower arrangement going on for that one. Uh, and this one also requires pre-registration. And again, all of that is on our website, BoardmanChamber.org. We will be holding another meet and greet with Nick Hess, who is running for governor here in Oregon. That's on the twenty-third at five P M. at the Riverfront Center. And then on the twenty-fourth, uh, Tillamook is holding a hiring event at Worksource Hermiston. And that will be all day from nine thirty to four P M. And it'll include some on-the-spot interviews for positions here in Boardman.
Thank you, Renee. Anybody else online have anything that they would like to share for public comment? Having hearing done, we'll move right on. We'll go to our action items. This is Peta Group.
Okay, so we have a resolution to name this, those new streets, uh. Oh, I guess I've got a book here that I probably could look at. Thank you. Resolution two dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution to correct street names on Destiny Three final plaque within the city of Boardman. And, uh, we'll change the Naples will be renamed Tatton Street. Rome Street will be renamed Tiger Street and General Road will be designated as a future right of way. And there's a map attached.
So no further question? Uh, we no longer have a Tiger Court then? Is that correct?
I think we decided that down such a short street that we just name it one name.
Perfect. Thank you.
And so, uh, I mean, if you'd rather have the whole thing named Tiger Court, we could do that, but.
No, it's fine.
Didn't seem much like that, you know, six houses on our new address.
Is it, is it, uh, common to have two names on one street? So like on where it says, oh, never mind. I misread it. I misread it.
Okay. Well, because people.
I, I, yes, I totally misread it. I see what it says now.
I did that already once today.
So, but what I do like is this, how the city was able to make this a whole lot more user-friendly.
Yes, well, and, and better for first responders, for sure. And for people that are addressing, yes, so. Okay, so if you. That we adopt resolution two dash twenty twenty-two.
I have a second, Mayor. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion that we'd, we'd like to have on this? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilor Pearson.
Yes.
Councilor Beagle.
Approve.
Councilor Norton.
Yes.
Councilor Dragan Junior.
Yes.
Councilor Prophet. Yes, and Mayor Cooper.
Yes. So the motion passes. So we'll move on to resolution five dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution to deny land use. An appeal of zoning permit, those numbers and approve those numbers. So we have this new resolution. What, what is this?
I'd like to read that into the record, please.
Yes.
Resolution five dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution to deny land use LU twenty-one dash zero zero five. An appeal of zoning permit, zoning permit, ZP twenty-one dash zero thirty-one and approve ZP twenty-one dash thirty-one. The city has adopted a comprehensive plan and developed code. And the city received an application for a transmission line for Umatel Aker, U E C, or applicant on May twenty-sixth, uh, twenty twenty-one. And there, as the city generated a substantial record, which led to an appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, L U B A. And here is the city file of withdrawal of the decision for reconsideration to L U B A on January tenth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the city re-engaged the decision-making process to correct various errors of placing the action back before the city count, county. That should get canceled for consideration at its February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two council meeting. Whereas the city council held a public hearing on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, hearing from staff that applicant, the appellant and other interested parties. And whereas the city council closed the hearing to deliberate and, whereas the city council considered the evidence and testimony in the record. Therefore, be it resolved, the city council determines to deny appeal LU twenty-one dash zero zero five and approve zoning permit LP twenty-one dash zero thirty-one, adopting the findings attached as exhibit A.
I'd like to move to approve resolution five dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution to deny land use LU twenty-one dash zero zero five. And feel zoning permit ZP twenty-one dash zero thirty-one, approve ZP twenty-three, twenty-one dash zero thirty-one.
You have a motion. Do I have a second? Every motion is a second. A discussion. I guess this, my question is, this is when we corrected, made those corrections, that is what we're talking about.
Mayor, I have a, an observation, um. On the one, two, three, four, fifth, whereas, where it says before the city county, and we made a correction, should not be, motion be made to adopt it or approve it with the corrections noted?
So we're at the one, two, three, four, five?
Yeah, where it says, uh, the city re-engaged decision-making process. And then it said action back before the city county. It should be city council.
Oh, yeah, this, we need to fix that spelling. Oh, yeah, this, we need to fix that spelling.
Then I could amend my motion to include the corrected spelling of council.
We have a second? A second then. Any other discussion we need to have as far as this? Let's go into a roll call, please.
Counselor Harrison?
Yes.
Approve.
Counselor Norton?
Yes.
Sir Drago?
Yes.
Counselor Prophet?
Yes.
And Mayor Cooper?
Yes. Other bit, business update on SDC waivers and process.
Yes, I'm, I'll take this.
Yeah, hoping you can make better, uh, this panic. I was rather confused as I read this memorandum.
Yeah, so I, um, before I became Carla McLean Boardman planning official, I was Carla McLean, Carla McLean Consulting, working with the city of Boardman to do an update for the SDC program.
Right.
So I've now switched that and I'm doing it in this role, so, um, I, I don't know how much background you have on this, but the, um, it was last, oh, God, I can't even remember, it was last fall. When is it now? I guess it was last summer. Yeah, we put it out to, um, I worked with the county, we did an RFP, uh, we did a selection, we, uh, selected S group who has drafted the memorandum that is the bulk of the conversation for this evening. Um, they've been doing, uh, they asked for a lot of data, a lot of information, which, um, thanks to, to Marta and Barry and other folks here at the city, we provided them a lot of upfront information, and they've been chewing away on that. And there's really kind of two steps to what we will eventually need to take action on. There's no action proposed for tonight. This is really just to bring you up to speed, let you know what we've been working on, really what they've been working on, and then to start talking about some of the policy considerations that come out of this. So the city adopted SDCs originally, and around two thousand, there was a pretty robust study that went into that. Um, and you've been operating from that two thousand era study, and that's what your current SDC formulation is based upon in the methodology. And so, right now, it's water and wastewater. And we're proposing to add transportation and parks. So, um, parks is an interesting one, because the city really does, when you look around, there's a lot of parks. But not very many of them are city parks. And city parks are growing, there's more city parks down than there was previously. But most of the big recreational facilities inside the community belong to the district. And so it's been an interesting conversation about what, what do we want to assess for SDC charges and how do we want to do that? I think we've kind of settled on city parks are city parks, and we'll figure out the rest of it later. So water and wastewater, where they're reevaluating the methodology, um, they're adding methodology for transportation, they're looking at what methodology would be for parks. We will eventually see that methodology, and what they're going to propose is new rates. And, and I would just say, buckle up, because you're going to be surprised. It's going to be a pretty big figure, and that's when you, as a council, are going to get to have that policy discussion about how much do you want to full, you know, do you want to put that into place in, in full, full bore? Or do you want over time add to it? And we'll get to that in a future memorandum. This is really about looking what is currently inside the city municipal code. So if you go to the city municipal code today, and you look for the SDCs, it's in chapter eight, if I remember correctly. And what this memorandum does, this date of January third, is it takes the current ordinance that the city has on the books, and it compares it with state law and, um, case law and practice, and it says, most of the ordinance you have is okay, but there's a couple of places in particular that you might want to think about making some changes. And that's what they really get into in, in this memorandum. Um, I don't know how detailed you want to get tonight, or how much time you want to spend, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have outside of, of the council meeting. Um, but they looked at definitions, they made a couple of citations, um, to provide some clarity, they talked about methodology, they talked about the improvement plan. And again, they're signing a lot of things here within, within statute, so they're really trying to make sure what we're doing is compliant with what Oregon revised statute says. We don't want to be out of sync with that, because it just opens us up for litigation and, and other bad things. Um, so as they go through there, they, they talk about several things. I think exemptions is interesting, they talk about, um, some of the bottom of the first page of their memorandum, they, they talk about something, and I, I, I like how they, they're blunt when they tell us this. We find section three point oh eight, point one hundred sub D to be legally risky and recommended deletion. I mean, they're not, they're not pulling any punches. They're going to tell us what they think is, is working and what we should be concerned about. Um, they also have a couple of, um, on the top of page two of their memorandum, they talk about a couple of things, again, that they, um, are saying, you might want to consider deleting those sections because they're, they're not consistent and they may be confirming powers on the city that are not consistent with state law. So I think we just want to be really clear about how we are consistent and how we're not. Um, on the accounting part, they're asking to revise a little bit of that, appeals. What you get into is that about the middle of page two, they actually get into the meat of the actual ordinance, and they actually are showing you a redlined version of what their suggested additions, deletions, and changes are. So this is not something that is for for you tonight for a decision. This is really about informing you. Um, we will need to make a decision on this at some point over the next several months. Um, close out on this process is June-ish. We're expecting the methodology memorandum soon. And when that arrives, we'll bring it back for you all to see that and, and begin kind of walking through that. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but hopefully this was more like a twenty thousand foot look tonight.
I guess I would like to add that, uh, because I'm my notes on my side, uh, we have not charged, we are charging SDCs this year. That was part of that, uh, first comment. They advised us that it was not legal for us to be waiving our SDC charges. And so, uh, and I spoke with Jackie, and she said, no one's even questioned. When, you know, she just says, your SDCs are this, and they pay, and nope, she said, no one has questioned it this year. So I think our timing was pretty good if we were not going to waive them, but we're kind of in a good market right now, so. Uh, anyway, we will not be waiving the SDCs this year, and that's why I didn't, I started to renew the new uh, renewal of the last ordinance, and then I put the brakes on, and that's why we haven't renewed that, and we will not. According to their advice.
The city of Hermiston just concluded their process to update their SDC, so if you happen to have a relationship with any of the Hermiston city councils, they might be good contacts for you about, you know, how they reviewed what they, what they did. Um, and they saw a pretty significant increase in, in their SDC charges and
Kind of anticipating that just from, it only makes sense because it, this is from, what, two thousand?
Yeah.
And it was only sixty percent. Well, and we only charged like sixty percent of what we could have for those days. Yeah. Yeah, so.
The numbers we're going to get from them, they said, are the maximums they can charge, the top, like if we absolutely got everything, that's what it would be.
Yeah, so there's some thinking to do about this.
Yes, Lisa.
Who said it wasn't legal to do that?
The FC S group.
You can, you can choose to not, so, so as an example, if, if, if the fee was a thousand dollars, the council could say, we're not going to charge a thousand dollars, we'll charge everybody seven hundred and fifty dollars. But to have a waiver that's, I mean, it, it's, it's got to be, it's got to be across the board, it can't be so slight in scale, I think are the, are the problematic and concerning areas. So what, what the accountant says, you should be charging, like Marta said, you should be charging this, that doesn't mean the city has to make a decision to charge that. They can make a decision to charge that already.
I, I, I'll, I'll, okay.
Any other questions? Or comments? Okay, so we'll go to the Red Cross proclamation. I think that's at the back, isn't it?
Yes. Mr. Beagle asked us to put this, and we've done, uh, proclamations before, and he will ask us, and this is a nice one for the American Red Cross to celebrate the month of March for that.
Mr. Mayor, all right. You've been, um, the reason I brought this up is during the Gulf War, um, the American Red Cross helped a lot of our troops that I was in charge of, those that were wounded in action and ship home, as well as reading the returning soldiers and sailors from the conflict at the various airports, giving them, um, a hot meal and someplace to relax while they wait for international flights, and also, um, the, the Red Cross has helped my son, who's deployed Sunday.
He's deployed on Sunday?
He left Sunday.
Oh, he left Sunday?
Yes.
Would you like me to read this?
If you would, please.
Proclamation, American Red Cross Month, twenty-two. Whereas in the time of crisis, people in Boardman come together to take, to care for one another. This humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of our community and is exemplified by American Red Cross Cascade Region volunteers and donors, and whereas in eighteen eighty-one, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. Today, more than one hundred forty years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in Boardman, who continue to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy. They join the millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially or learn Bible life through serving skills through the Red Cross, and whereas in the Cascade Region, serving Oregon and Southwest Washington, the contributions of more than two thousand five hundred local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours. The Red Cross does so by providing more than two thousand six hundred emergency overnight shelter stays, along with food and comfort for families devastated by more than six hundred eighty local disasters like home fires. Through the generosity of those donating more than one hundred eighty-two thousand units of essential blood for accident and burn victims, heart surgery and/or in transplant patients, and those receiving treatment for leukemia, leukemia, cancer, or sickle cell disease, or by supporting service members and veterans on average of eight times a day, along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life. And by helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid, and whereas their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. We dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advocate, excuse me, who continue to advance the noble legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." We ask others to join in this commitment to give back in our community. Now therefore, I call keeper mayor of the city of Boardman, Oregon, to hereby proclaim March twenty-twenty-two as Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens of Boardman to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Thank you, sir. You bet. You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Beagle, for bringing that.
I'll use a side note, when we had the big whistle a couple of years ago, Red Cross was really right here.
Jim, is this the one you want to cite?
I'll read it.
Perfect. Looks like we're at the police report.
So, uh, in your back, you should have, uh, the monthly report for, for February. Are there any questions about that report? Okay, if not, then, uh, also, uh, at the dais, or at your table, we were giving, uh, our annual report for twenty-twenty-one. Staff did an amazing job putting this together. Uh, we tried to put these out, tried to put them out early, but with COVID the last couple of years, it's been really difficult to give anything to them, um, especially the staff and the shooting stuff, so. It's a very informed report. Uh, we give this out to the community, we put this stuff in, and we usually get a lot of good feedback from this report. It kind of gives the community an idea of what the, the, the police department's doing. Uh, so, uh, with that, uh, Captain Eager is, is prepared presentations, uh, which we try to do, um, as well to the council and different organizations that we can, so if I can turn this work in. So, I want to make sure we're sharing. Uh, Leslie, can you see the PowerPoint?
Yes, I can see it just fine.
Oh, it's not working online. All right. Can you still see it? Is it full screen?
Yes, I can see it.
Okay, go ahead, Captain Eager.
All right, we're good. Well, good evening. Um, my name is Warren Eager, I'm the captain of the police department, I think most of you know me. Well, if you don't online, that's who I am, I've been with the police department since two thousand and five, so I've been here for a little while, not quite twenty years. Um, so hopefully you've had a chance to review the report. Um, I'm not going to go through page by page, obviously you can read that, but I just kind of want to hit on a few of the highlights, um, in the report, so. Um, it starts out with our mission. I just want to read here a little break. The Boardman Police Department is committed to maintaining the trust, respect, the competence of the citizens and visitors of Boardman, are providing the highest level of friendly, professional service. We strive to enhance the quality of every individual in our community and to make a positive impact in their daily lives. We embrace the highest ethical standards of law enforcement while protecting the rights and weight of every citizen. This is very important. This is what our department is, you know, our, our, kind of our guiding light. It's posted as you walk into our department on the wall, so that the guys can read it. Um, when we give new officers, they have to read it, um, and kind of what we live by. Um, so we're going to start with the staff. I know there's pictures in there, I didn't fill them in here because you can look at them. Um, so at this time, we have, um, eleven sworn and one unsworn. Um, if you don't know the difference, sworn officer means that you have been or have to go through, uh, DPSSD have to be certified, our officers have to recertify every three years, they have a whole bunch of training they have to do, um, and that's after they have gone through the academy. Um, so basically, the eleven officers that we have is obviously we have the chief of police, myself, the captain, we have a lieutenant, we have a sergeant, both of them are, uh, pretty much their, their, uh, their job is they supervise the patrol staff. Um, and then we have three special assignments. Um, one is the SRO, School Resource Officer, and then we have two detectives, which we'll talk about, um, each one of those. And then we have three reserve officers. And reserve officers are volunteers, like volunteer firefighters. Um, they're sworn, but they're not required to go through DPSSD to get certified. Um, but we do make sure that they meet the same standard as a full-time police officer for us. Um, also, um, if you know some of our officers, you probably know Officer Martinez came from our reserves, uh, he was a reserve with us, and we hired He was a reserve with us, and we hired him. I was a reserve in Morro County. Piercey was a reserve. I think about half of our officers that we have now came from a reserve, maybe not with Oregon PD, but with an agency somewhere else. And the reserves, it gives us an opportunity to see the kind of person they are, you know, before you hire them. You know, you can get a little bit of what a person is in a day full of, you know, testing and interviews, but you can't always get the full picture of what that person is and what kind of person they are without having them work with us. And so having those reserves is a great opportunity for us to look at possibly who we want to hire. And if you don't know our reserves that we have now, we have three of them. Actually, we're down to two now. Our sergeant, Carrie Hyden, she just went to Gillon County. She's going to be a reserve over there. Then we have Officer Jose Fernandez, who's also a federal officer. And Fuz Song, he lives in Hermiston, been with us for eight years, nine years, shortly after Chief gave him. And then I put in here the Animal Control Supervise Officer, which is Jose Fernandez. We don't supervise him, but the reason I want to mention him, and it'll come up later, I supervise the City of Oregon, but whenever he goes out on a code call or a dog call, he pulls an incident, and a lot of times he pulls cases, which means that those go onto our stats. So we'll talk a little bit about stats, and so I put that in there so you know when I talk about that, why it goes. So let's start with our, we'll start with our investigations unit. I told you we have two detectives. The first detective we have is Corey Rosen, and he's on our vet team, which is the Blue Mountain Enforcement and Narcotics Team, so our drug team. And then he is been on there a year? Not quite a year. Not quite a year. In fact, I think he's, yeah, April. I think he's at eight months. Before that, it was Greg Sherman. He was a retired West Beach trooper. He was on the team for quite a while for us. So the vet team primarily works in Morro and Umatilla County. They do sometimes work cases outside of it, but they always start here, and then they may end up working a case that takes them to Portland or over to tri cities. But their major restriction that they work in Morro and Umatilla County. You know, just from past experience, I know that for many years, the boardman didn't have an officer on there. And so if we had a case in Boardman, a lot of times they didn't get a priority. And so it's been really nice to have that position because now we get much more priority than we used to when we didn't have anybody on the road task force. So for 2021, this is just really great, that over 48 pounds of methamphetamine, 4.4 pounds of cocaine that they see, 6.6 pounds of heroin, 2.2 pounds of marijuana, even though marijuana is legal in certain amounts. If you have over certain amounts, it's considered a delivery or a manufacturing, and that is still illegal in the state of Oregon. And then we talked, I put 41,970 dosage units, but I didn't put in there that that is fentanyl, which is probably, right now, the biggest problem we're having with law enforcement is fentanyl. And so basically, a dosage unit is a pill, you know? And of course, with fentanyl, one pill is an equal to another. You know, they're not made in a medical facility, so you don't know what you're getting. And so I'm sure everybody in here, if you haven't, if you don't know somebody, you probably know somebody that knows somebody that's been infected by fentanyl, and we have had, last year, we did have a fentanyl death within the city of Oregon.
And several overdoses.
And several, yeah, several overdoses and one fatality that we know was a fentanyl overdose. And the problem with fentanyl is that, you know, they can take one pill and use it, and the next pill they have twice or three times what the last pill did, and so they use the same amount thinking the pills are equal, and it literally is lethal to them. So. Last year, the vet team was involved in dismounting and disrupting four drug trafficking organizations. Also, as a detective, or both of our detectives do, we have a major crimes team, which is between Umatilla and Morro County. It responds to all major crimes. So like, you know, we had a, there was a homicide in Hermiston here just a few months ago. So myself and Detective Piercey responded to that to assist Hermiston PD. If we have a big crime happen here, they come here. We have milk-free water. Basically, any agency within Morro County, we work together because, you know, we're not in Oregon, we don't have all of those, those resources that we have in the big city.
Just a second. Leslie, are you able to hear us?
Yes, I can hear now.
Okay, that's Katie? Katie, are you able to hear now?
Yes, I had to reconnect, but yes, I'm fine now.
Okay, thank you. We had audio issues.
All right. Okay, so our second detective, we added this position in 2019, and that's Detective Piercey. And so this is our criminal investigator. So he pretty much channels all of the cases at some point, any homicides, attempted murders, assaults, sex crimes, any child crimes or crimes against children, even if it is a case that starts, you know, with our patrol officer taking the case. He is somehow involved in not taking over the investigation and ran with those cases. He is also a member of the Major Crimes Task Force. And on top of that, he also covers patrol shifts as needed when we, when we have that or when we need that. So just really briefly, so last year, he took 105 calls for service, criminal detective, and he took 25 reports. The thing to remember is it's, is, you know, if you look at it, our highest, I don't know if performing is the right word, but the officer that took the most reports last year was, it's 79. So it's like, only 25, that's not very many, but you got to remember that on those detective reports, it's not a go-out criminal mischief, you know, a paragraph report. Yeah, where, you know, they have a report done in 20 minutes. His reports, usually he may have to go do, you know, multiple interviews. We have big cases like a homicide or attempted murder. I've got, you know, our last murder that we had here is a four-inch binder that is full. So even though it's not a lot of reports, they are very in-depth, and they're reports that honestly a patrol officer would struggle with because, one, they don't have their time. You know, they have, they have to constantly take calls, and so going to Hermiston or going to Pendleton or going to Portland to try and track down a suspect or a victim or a witness, you know, for a patrol officer who's also trying to cover calls in uniform, that can be very difficult. School Resource Officer is another position, a special assignment we have right now. That's Officer Shimer. He works at Sam Boardman, Lundy River, and Riverside High School. Some of the things that he does is he teaches our introduction to criminal justice, which is basically just what it says. The students take the class and they kind of get an idea of what you need to know to get into law enforcement. It's a four-year class, and he teaches the same class each year, and he gives the students an opportunity to see if maybe law enforcement or the legal field is something that they want to do and something that we're asking them to do. He also teaches our driver's education, which for two years has not been happening because of COVID. So he literally just started that up this school year. Well.
Within the last couple of months.
Yeah, within the last couple of months. And he's also our car seat technician. He has multiple grants, so we have car seats so that if we have people, if you know anybody that needs a car seat or booster seat that can't afford one, we have those here at the PD that we can hand out. And so he does that.
So on the driver's education, it's important to understand that at least when I got here, we didn't have a drivers at a program, and I had sent my kids to Hermiston, so I had given them there to do drivers that plus we paid for. Here, we provide that service at no cost to the students or the parents. And we're probably, I think we're still the only law enforcement agency in the state of Oregon that has a certified police officer, police officer that teaches drivers there. There's still a lot of interest in it. It's just trying to get it going, so.
Okay, so now we'll go over some statistics. So what I did is I put 2020, as well as 2020, where'd you have in your packet? Just kind of a comparison, and I highlighted some of these numbers because you'll see from COVID, some of the numbers, you know, like the total reports, factual stuff there. So if you go up to the top and we start at the incidents, the letters said the incidents didn't go up a whole lot, the total incidents, but then we have what we call calls for service. So real quick, the difference between an incident and a call for service, so anytime an officer does anything, if they do a traffic stop, if they go out with a citizen by contact at 2:00 in the morning, if they do a building check and they shake the doors, that generates an incident. Okay? But we separate out calls for service because calls for service are that. It's somebody calls in either to Butch here, or they call 911, or they call the non-emergency number, and then officers are actually dispatched up to that. And we delineate the two because the calls for service are the ones that we get that we are pulled away from. The other ones we call the officer-initiated activities is the rest of those. And you'll notice that the, so the total incidents were about the same, but calls for service went up a little bit from, even with COVID, they went up a little bit. And I did a little bit more research, like if you go back to 2019, you know, we had 4,000, about 4,100 calls for service and about the, about 2,200 call, or sorry, 24100 total incidents and about 2,200 calls for service pre-COVID. So our calls for service and our total incidents went down because, as many of you may have known, City Hall was shut down. We had COVID protocols, so basically what we told our officers is if you can take the call by phone, you do that. We don't want you going out and making arrests unless it's something that's absolutely necessary, that's a safety issue for, you know, the, the community. And, and we told them unless, you know, it's some kind of egregious act, we don't want you outrunning, you know, traffic and stopping every car because of COVID. And so we kind of bottlenecked it down to make sure that our officers and the community were safe. And so that's why some of the numbers are down. Now, I highlighted the total officer reports because, as you can see, that's a huge jump, right? From 2020 to 21. One of the things that happened between those two is our code enforcement officer Hernandez this year started taking what we would call cases or reports for every one of his code compliance issues. So that added 188 reports to our total. So we still went up quite substantially, but 188 of those are from code enforcement.
Captain Deere, we can't read those numbers.
Oh, okay.
The red's really hard to read.
Is it?
Yeah, on there.
Yeah, so, so total reports in 2020, we had 343, and initially we had 820 for 2021. I mean, so more than double. But as I said, so 200 of those were code enforcement, so we still had a substantial increase in the cases, and you can tell that by looking, so on felony reports, we had 45 in 20, and we had 90 in 21. And then this year, we had 170 in 2020 and 210 in 2021. Another big one, and you can see what I have here, is under violation. So we had seven violations, reports or violations in 2020 and 188 in 2021. And that's from Officer Hernandez, the code enforcement officer, starting to take reports so that he can track issues like, you know, I think.
Tree hanging down.
Tree hanging down, grass is too tall.
But bushes.
Abandoned vehicles.
So it's important to know, though, that none of those calls that the code works on are a crime, not a felony or misdemeanor, they fall under violation.
Yes, they're all violations, they're city ordinances.
Right.
So we did have, we seen an increase. And like I said, I kind of went back a few years, and I can't tell you 2020 was down a little bit. 19 and 20 were down a little bit on numbers, and I think a lot of that has to do with COVID. I think in 2021, the numbers are starting to go up because, you know, everybody knows that people were starting to get a little tired of it, and so people started coming out. They, and we started having more domestics, and we started having more thefts, and, and, you know, and I think people just started being more active. And then the big one that I highlighted it, so we had 65 arrests in 2020, and then 131 in 2021. And it's like, oh my gosh, that's almost double the amount, right? Again, I think a lot of that goes back to COVID. Our officers were doing site releases on, on people unless it was, you know, a serious crime, and so they weren't having all the contacts that we would normally have, especially during the most of the standard 2021. Any questions on any of those? All right. So there's a page in there under community feedback that we, it's just some notes that we've gotten, some cards that we've gotten from people, thank you notes for what we've done. Also, the annual report, I notice it'll say like, you know, the family or a friend of. We didn't want to put people's names that had sent us these cards and thank you notes, so that's, we just substituted, Butch substituted those in the report. And I'll let you read these, but I do want to let you know that we have goals, we set goals for our department. So customer service is obviously, a lot of people are like, customer service, or are we Walmart? No. Well, every person that we deal with, whether it's someone that we arrest or it's somebody that we help go and get fuel because they broke down, they're our customer, right? And so our customer service to us is probably one of the most important things that we have. And then obviously predictive policing strategies, that goes back to community policing, trying to find out where the problems are so that we can put the correct resources with the problem and not being what we call reactive policing, where we're just going to where the problem happened and trying to take care of it after the fact. Traffic issues, I think those are always a big issue, and, you know, I know since I've been here in 15 years now, plus, you know, the traffic, and I'm sure everybody can tell you, the traffic is getting worse and worse in Oregon, you know, just try to get on, come off the freeway eastbound or westbound, the schools going to school or getting out of school at the high school, and you're going to see just how bad traffic can be. And so obviously, you know, speeding is a huge thing, and making sure people, stop signs, we were just having a conversation about stop signs. You know, we've had accidents and stop signs, learning a stop sign is one of those that will cause accidents. And then livability issues, and, you know, as much as, as people don't like code enforcement, you know, I go back to, but it is one of those livability things, you know? If your neighbor next to you has a dog that's barking constantly and you can't sleep at night, that's a livability issue, right? We want to get that taken care of, and so we want to make sure that we work to make this community most livable and, and the greatest community that we can for the people that live within it. Any questions?
I have one. Yes. Recently, you were awarded the Patrolman of the Year, First Responder, and it was not included in the presentation.
Well, it hasn't been officially.
It's, it's.
I mean, it has been, but it will happen at the.
It'll happen on my report.
Yeah, so that was the chamber. We literally just did that yesterday.
Well, it was out to the press and the public, so I figured. It's on Facebook.
It was?
Oh.
It's on Facebook now.
Where, though?
Oh. Oh.
Uh.
What page?
There's no secrets.
I don't know, was it the police, or was it the chamber?
Department of Police does not have a Facebook page, nor do we, I don't have one, so we're not.
I would not doubt it if it was Officer Lomas's one of her.
Oh, that was, it was Lomas.
It was probably one of her family members that was there, because I, we heard that Sunday.
The pictures, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, interfamilies, that, that makes sense, because.
It was apparently Sunday before she was even supposed to get surprised with the, the award. The family was congratulating her, and she had no idea what it was even about, so, yeah, it's probably family.
Gotcha, I don't say, I told them all that, but there was a lot of.
So at the time that we prepared the report and everything, we did not know that, this is something that's done by the chamber, and they selected us. I, I found out yesterday afternoon, so we're extremely proud, and we will acknowledge that. But it, it really wasn't supposed to get out to the public. Yeah, and telling you the award anyway.
I'd like to text her tonight and go, hey, you weren't supposed to share your pictures, you know that.
I think she was pretty excited.
Oh, absolutely, I saw that.
We are very proud of you.
Absolutely.
Well, I knew before she did yesterday, because her.
What did you write it?
No, her boyfriend, he, I think, he's, 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 wait, what, he's standing there, or?
It was a bit of chaos. Another good officer showed up. But I'm like, are we done yet?
Any other questions?
No.
All right, thank you very much for your time, and I'm grateful.
Thank you, Captain Theater.
So again, I, I'll just follow up with, you know, we can't do this without your support. It is extremely valuable, as you can see, we are getting busier, I know the council's asked in, in the past, where we are, you know, we're getting close to staffing issues, and what I would tell you is we're kind of in that gray area of needing somebody, but we're a little concerned to get too much, so we're trying to balance that, but my guess is probably within the next few months, we're gonna have to be looking at that, and, and Captain and I had a discussion, so we want to make sure that we're able to continue to provide that service that you've become a customer to having, and make sure you got a safe place for you and your families to live in. And so again, thank you for your support, if we couldn't do it without. That's all I have for this, if anybody has something else.
All right, moving on to the building department report, are there any questions about building department report?
I don't know, I missed this in January, but look at your in summers. Yes, they brought in black sixteen at one time, nineteen.
Yeah.
But, yes, but they brought in sixteen at one time.
Oh, I see.
On one day. Then somebody else brought in one.
Three more, yeah. Well, one suddenly, it's that, okay, it's one suddenly. I was like, holy smokes, how did I miss this?
No, it's great for them, they're finally getting some. They'll get some pass space.
And they'll have to have a police department.
Yes.
Are there any questions about public works department? Moving on, how about public works department? And having now that city manager report.
Okay, I have, I have quite a bit to say, because I did a very good job on my report. The first thing I want you to look at your calendars, and if we need to have an extra meeting this month, how is the twenty third, that's a Thursday? And I realize it's spring break.
Really?
I will be out of town. This is Katie.
I mean, Katie, would you be able to zoom in?
Uh, yeah, potentially, yeah.
Because I'm gonna need a forum.
Uh, yeah, I could probably do that.
What would be the meeting about?
Would you just? I think that we'll, we'll see if we have an appeal.
Oh, it could be a possible appeal here, okay.
And so it's probably a short meeting, just, I just need to save the date. While you look at your calendars, I'm gonna continue to talk.
Okay, keep going.
So I just note, so you know, we're getting into some timing issues, so we need to, we try not to do those, but, but.
And it was the twenty fourth, the latest that we could do it?
Well, we're trying to target that date, but we can make it happen.
Twenty one is the earliest. We need to do it as soon as we can.
Are you talking about the twenty fourth of this month?
Yes.
Yes.
That is spring break, just to heads up.
I don't think that you did with yours.
Well, how is your twenty ninth look, Leslie?
Well, we got Katie, so she can call then, so how about Leslie?
Um, what day are we looking at now for calling in?
The twenty fourth.
Yeah, I can make that work.
I won't be in town, I know I won't be in town. I, I could probably call in, somebody could run the meeting on who's in person, I, I, I don't think I want to run a meeting online, I.
No, that's, that's a hearing, so probably wouldn't want.
Absolutely, I've seen enough here, enough meetings online, I would just, didn't like it. So if somebody is in person can do it, that would be, I could, I know I can make it work if online, if that was needed to be.
Well, I'm in town, but.
Boy, nice, I have softball, if you could do it on another day, I don't.
Well, I just have another training, it goes from six to or five to seven thirty, so.
On that day.
Yeah. I'm just trying to avoid it, but wow, I can.
I know I'm more available, I know I'm more available in the next week after spring break. I mean, I could make it work.
Council, how about Mr. Beagle?
I don't have access to my calendar, I've got Hank's plan, I don't know what the.
And you're kind of, I, I have nothing.
He might be fishing.
Not that, hopefully not.
Cut back for this.
So I still think we should try to shoot for the twenty fourth, if we can all make it to happen, and if we can't, then we can look at a different day. But we really need to try to do this as timely as possible.
Has the appeal not come? Are we anticipating an appeal?
We're anticipating an appeal, okay.
So if an appeal comes, then we need, the earliest date is the twenty fourth. So what do we have to do with the earliest?
So in land use, we are required to come to a decision on a matter within a hundred and twenty days. And that's all we're championing, and so I could get into a lot of detail, but I'll just tell you, we're pushing against that hundred and twenty days.
And we made it, so this is a separate appeal on what we board, so it's an appeal with, it's an appeal on appeal in a hundred and twenty days. So we have a hundred and twenty days for all appeals to happen.
On different lots, different spaces.
But let's, let's, let's try not to get too much into the needs, you just need to try to do that in a timely fashion, so.
All right, well, if we either make it or we can't make it, I guess we'll just leave it at that. If we can't make it, so if you don't want that day, just say you're not available, and we'll make it on another day.
No. I need to have a forum.
I know you need to have a forum.
And so I need to know if I can't have everybody call in on the night of the twenty third and say, hey, I can't show. So if you have, if you don't think you've made it, email us and let us know, otherwise we're going to plan on like the twenty fourth, we could start at seven thirty if we needed to, I mean, we could change the time, that's not a problem.
Well, no, it's a problem.
Oh, is it?
Because we have the notice tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
To publish on Thursday, so I need to have some clarity on will we have a forum on the twenty fourth, and what time are we gonna start that period?
Can I interrupt and say, if we do it on the twenty fourth, that moving it later would be less desirable? I would prefer to start it earlier.
So what if we were to throw out, what, what if it was at three in the afternoon?
Oh, I, I'm just saying, seven versus seven thirty.
Okay, well, Brenda has something, three would not work. Okay, okay, I'm just trying to figure out time.
Is you're gonna run the meeting?
So if Mr. Beagle can look at his calendar, and I, I'll get ahold of him, and Junior's good, and you're maybe.
I will be either or.
Okay.
So I, I will make myself available on that day, either in person or online.
Oh, okay, online's fine. Okay, so, okay, now let's go on with the rest of my report. I gave you, I gave you the notice about if I were mayor.
You did?
Yes, I've been working on trying to get that with my four, five, six graders.
Well, I just knew that you had an interest in it.
Thank you, they've been emailing me on my email, because the deadline's coming up in April.
Yeah, okay, U E C, I want, I want everybody to know, U E C has put out this nice brochure, and what it's about is they're going to replace the poles on Wilson Road. So you don't need to, if, if you get inquiries about, because I, I'm worried that this is gonna make people think that they're putting a new line in, they're not putting a new line in, they're, only thing they're doing, I don't know, I ended up with them all here. Huh?
This might be a good press release.
Yes, well, I did, I hope it's supposed to be in the multiple times this month, because I thought they would start in March and end by June, but what started this is I, I wanted the girls to answer the phone here at City Hall, for people to call and question this, I want everybody to know the facts. That it's only, they're gonna, the poles, I think, are gonna be about five foot taller, but they're just gonna be replacing those old poles. So it's not gonna be new lines, and this is a nice brochure, and I can get hundreds of them if we want. So. Oh, we, we thought the other night that we have never taken you on a tour of the building. And since somebody mentioned the A E D tonight, and I don't know, yes, it was you, okay, if you ever need to know where the A E D is, if you go out that door, and you go between the, the conference room, where we have our executive session, there is hanging right there on that wall by the back door.
See if it's all the way through.
Yes, it's two, well, that's two doors, so you go through the small conference room, and it's right there, so if you ever, you know, because we got the thinking that it would, you know, if we ever needed to know that, the first A gets there and stuff, and there's restrooms and a patient sink back there too, so someday we'll make it on tour, but we still have that executive session to do. The League of Oregon Cities, in their bulletin last week on two twenty five, they have, they would like the elected officials to fill out a survey about demographics, and it's due on the fourth, so you've got a couple days, so if you wanna, like to say, they email you a lot when they're trying to get you to do this stuff, so, anyway, if you'd like to do that. Wilson, we're, we're having, you know, we asked for quotes for street lights, and we're, we're gonna have a new one, I paid for it to go in at Wilson and Paul Smith, but then we need one on Mount Hood and Fader and Chaparral. The Oregon Trail one, I think we're gonna have to wait on until we see where the road, if we have to do a new road over here, and go with the B P A, I think we might have to wait on that one. And then Donovan and Eldridge, and then we're probably needing a couple by the dog park.
When you said street lights?
People.
It's pretty important.
Yes, yes, and.
It's actually very important.
Well, and it's, it's a safety issue, you know, for sure. The other thing, have, have you guys, have we given you this, this little pamphlet that says local government at the basics? I think we gave it to the last council.
I don't recall seeing something like that, you know it's online.
Okay.
We did, it was the last council, so we'll try to get some more.
Yes, that's what I think, because this is really nice, there's basic, basic things that you need to know about how to, what's evolved in the government plan, using water rights and all that, so, okay, we'll do that. I think that's, I think that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, I, I was remiss in, in passing on to you, well, on, on this report. As you probably heard, there was an active shooter incident up in the track cities a couple weeks ago, and they were calling for officers from all over, so we did send three officers up to that incident to assist them in, in that case, so that is something we're very proactive in, when another agency needs help, we will do it if we can. And the flip side is, I expect that in return, so hopefully we never have that type of incident. But we also are gonna be, that, every time we have that type of situation, we have businesses that are concerned, and it brings up a height in life, so we have three prays. You can give the acronym, Captain.
Praise.
Yeah.
Citizen response to that issue.
And so we actually do go around at no charge, and we put on these classes to them on how to better harden themselves and, and what to do if there is a situation, and how to try to prevent a situation from happening, so we, we have had some requests to go do that, so we will continue to do that, again, we do that at no charge to our community, so. Those are a couple things I did in that.
There any councilor comments? Oh, you have a question?
Comment, the street light at Wilson and Mount Hood is all out, for Mount Adams is going out every night.
I think that was, this can be fixed, I don't know.
I think very much. Yes, we have some that need to be fixed, and we're not charged, I mean.
That would be U E C.
Kind of remind them.
The full number should be that.
We'll request that full number.
We, because we may bring that file, but we turned in several that we do need to have replaced. So, yeah, and if you know of one, let us know, so we could, because it's important, the, the street lights we do have, we're too.
So when we, when, so we contract U E C to put up those lights, is that what we do, and just?
Yes.
To, to do that?
And it takes them months, I mean, months, because we've been at this, well, I don't know, it's probably November, and we started talking to.
The street lights.
Yeah, I mean, well, they just are, they're like all short handed. And so, okay, let's take a walk.
Oh, we got, any councilor comments? That they'd like to share? Leslie or Katie, you have any councilor comments?
Nope.
Any comments in here? So for the mayor com, uh, comment, I would like to share, last week, Maricopa Sheriff stopped the the dispatching services for EMS to the fire service, to the Warden and Fire Department. That has now been resolved, and as of Monday, February twenty eighth, fire call, our EMS calls are now dispatched to the Warden and Fire, so Warden and Fire now is being dispatched along with the, the Maricopa County ambulance to fire, or to, and EMS. Uh, ambulance to fire, or to, and E M S calls in the city of Wardman. So I just want to let our citizens know that. That that has been resolved.
And for mayor, I would echo that. I've had several people talk to me today, uh, in the community wanting to know what they do if they have an emergency. And I tried to reaffirm that. So anybody who can tell, um, Wardman Fire, their E T's, uh, fire and E T staff are continuing to respond to E M S calls. Um, they never, Warden Fire never stopped restoring, but the dispatch services have been restored. Um, so it's real important that if you know somebody, let them know because uh, that's important. It's very important. So.
All right, so that ends all our comments. We are now gonna go into executive session for two things. Personnel, which is one nine two point six six zero two A, and we're gonna be also in there for real estate. One nine two point six six zero two two. And we will recess this meeting.
Mr. Mayor, do you plan on any um, coming back?
Yeah, we're gonna come back and uh, we're gonna plan on coming back with uh, the decision on what we're gonna do.
And how would you like to notify the public that we're back?
Uh, I guess.
Sam, Sam and Jonathan, do you want to be contacted when we return back from executive session?
Uh, yes, I would, please.
Do you have a number we can text you so that we can let you know that we're coming back?
Yeah, do you mind if I just text you?
Uh.
Or message you personally?
Yeah, i- if you have my number, please message me personally. If not, we'll figure it out. Uh, Sam?
Nah, there's there's no need. I'm just here.
Okay, thank you. So Jonathan, when we come back, I'll, I'll, uh, did you send me a message?
Yes, I did.
Where did you send it?
Well, is, isn't it right down there?
Oh, it's in the chat?
Yeah, yeah, it's in the chat. Sorry.
Okay, let me, I'll copy that and then I'll let you know as soon as we're done.
Thank you.
So that's how we'll notify. Yes, and we'll make the decision. We, well, we'll let you know what we're doing. I would think, which may or may not make the decision. So I hear my recess this week.
I am.
What a call.
If you're on the list, you'll be on the list for notification. So uh, thank you.
So this recording is separate from executive session. I'm gonna end the call and then we'll start right back up, okay?
You look tired, Leslie. Mr. Mayor? All right, we'll hereby resume our city council meeting here at eight fifty-nine P M. And we are going to.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would uh, make staff recommendation that uh, uh, we move forward with the sale of the properties. Uh, belonging to the city on Front Street to uh, B C D A, uh, if you will give us authorization. Uh, to move forward in those uh, real estate transaction and authorize uh, the city manager or her designated to sign. Uh, that would be good. Um.
Do you need an emotion?
If you, if you could do some moves out of some.
I'll second it. Are you needing one?
Yes, we are recording.
We got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion over this?
Well, I think we probably do need an official session to have Leslie recuse herself from any land.
Yeah, she already made that that clear. So what we'll do is we'll come out in in session and say that Leslie has.
Okay, we're.
Four in session, so.
Well, I mean, from executive session. We're, we're in regular session now, so.
So we're letting her recuse.
So now she could uh, recuse herself if she had her calendar.
Okay, Leslie?
I need to recuse myself from this discussion.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've done that. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? So we'll do a roll call. Secretary.
Okay, I'm not gonna get your names in order.
Just. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Beagle?
Approve.
Uh, Leslie?
She's.
Oh, Leslie, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're right. You're good.
Katie Norton?
Yes.
And Junior?
Yes.
And Brenda? Yes. And Mr. Keith?
Yes.
I get one, two, three, four, five guesses. Mr. Beagle has already said approved.
Yes, oh, yeah, that's right. You have five guesses, one recues and one ass.
That's right.
So we still, we're good.
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Pass.
Motion.
Mr. Mayor, so the the next thing I would uh, uh, bring up is personnel. Um, it would be staff recommendation that with uh. Um, the the planning official only being a short time physician, um, that we hire an associate planner. To uh, uh, come forward and take on uh, uh, some of those responsibilities and then hopefully transition into a full-time planning official. Um, and so we would ask for your authorization to move forward in that process. So.
Second, we have a motion in a second with Mr. Beagle. Roll call, please.
In a discussion.
In a new discussion, discussion, any discussion? Is there any discussion on that?
Um, I I do have a question.
Yes, Mr. Beagle.
The timeframe that we're speaking of, you you in discussion, I heard a couple of months to six months to eight months. Do we have any firm timeline for this position? For the position, for 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 the position that we have currently filled, it's it's going to, it's a part-time position right now. And it's not gonna exceed more than nine months. Um, it could be less than nine months, but we're hoping to get at least nine months. This position that I'm asking you now to fill would be a full-time position and there would be no time. Uh, constraints as to whether or not, it it would be a full-time position.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Having none, we'll do a roll call, please.
Mr. Beagle?
Approve.
Uh, Katie Martin?
Yes.
Leslie Pearson?
No.
Yes, she can.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Apologize.
Uh, Junior Drago?
Yes.
Brenda? Yes. Mary Heaver?
Yes, yes, please.
Um. I'm ready. Junior moves. Brenda seconded.
Wrong answer.
First one?
On the first one, that's great.
Okay, dude.
And.
First one.
Junior moves. And.
Mr. Beagle.
Mr. Beagle?
Yes.
Seconded. In the sloppiest possible way.
So, Mr. Mayor, the staff has no further uh, recommendations.
All right, having your no further recommendations, we will hereby close this meeting and adjourn.
At nine.
At nine forty-four or something.
Now, it's close.